This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour has arrived for us to open up our virtual Board of Supervisors meeting for the month of May, May 7th, a regular scheduled meeting. And we are so pleased this evening to have with us the pastor of the Lebanon Baptist Church, Surrey County, Virginia Reverend Dr. Douglas Adams, who's going to lead us in our invocation. So at this time, we're going to ask Dr. Adams if he would give us an implication for this meeting on this evening.
Good evening, everyone. As we get started, there's a couple of verses of Psalms 91 I'd just like to read for your hearing. And it reads like this, "He that dwells in the secret place of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty. I will say of the Lord, he is my refuge and my fortress; my God, in him will I trust. Surely he shall deliver thee from the snare of the foul land, from the noisome pestilence. He shall cover thee with his feathers, and under his wings shall thy trust. His truss shall be my shield and buckler. Thou shalt not be afraid for the terror by night, nor for the arrow that flyeth by day, nor for the pestilence that walketh in darkness, nor for the destruction that wasteth at noonday." Lord, we thank you once again for all of your goodness and your grace that is extended to us every single day. And we just want to say thank you for all of your goodness and all of your grace. We also thank you for how you move in the life and the affairs of your people. We thank you, Lord, because, well, because we can't do anything without your help. And so, Lord, as we go into this meeting this evening, we want to thank you for your grace that has been extended to our community called Surrey. We thank you that in spite of this epidemic that is taking the land, you've been mighty good to all of us, and we want to say thank you. And as we continue this prayer, we ask you to stretch forth your hand and bless our loved ones and our children far and near, that you would continue to bless them. We also ask a special blessing on this county and this community. We ask you now to lead us and guide us, stand by us and protect us, and we will give your name, all of the glory, and all of the honor will be yours. This we ask in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen and amen.
Amen, amen. We thank Dr. Adams for our evenings and vacation, and at this time, we call for a moment of silence. Thank you. We want to ask one board member to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. And on this evening, we're going to ask our board member, Mrs. Little, if she would lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the United States at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May we pledge to the United States' flag, cross your chest. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Board Member Little, for leading us in our pledge of allegiance. At this time, I'm asking that all of the board members, if you would give away your attention to the agenda for this evening. We have received the agenda with an opportunity to look over it, and we are asking now if there'll be no questions on the agenda for a roll call vote to accept the agenda as our working document for this evening.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Judy Little, motioning.
We have a motion and second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Now we have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman.
Good evening. Roll call, though, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Holmes, if you can hear me, we just needed you to respond for the roll call vote.
Ms. Chapman, I don't know if Mr. Holmes is in or not, but if we could continue, we do have a form to accept this, and I'll ask Mr. .
Mr. Calhoun, can we get your roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, could you please see if you can contact Mr. Holmes?
I think we'll do that now.
Thank you, sir. Board members, we do have before us tonight items of consent. I hope you've had an opportunity to look over those. We have our minutes from our meeting from February the 20th and the 24th, March 5th meeting, our work session on March the 5th. It's been a little while since we've had our minutes to come to consent, but we know that it's due to the condition of having to be virtual, and we thank our staff for working so diligently to bring our minutes to us for a vote on tonight. So we do have our minutes from those meetings, and also, we do have resolutions for National Emergency Management Service Week that is before us and a resolution for Business Appreciation Month. Are there any questions on our consent items for tonight? If there be no questions on our consent items, could I have a motion to accept those items to be approved by the board?
So moved, Mr. Elliott, this is Tim Calhoun.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mike Drury.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, let it be known by a roll call vote, Mrs. . Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call vote, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And Mr. Holmes, if you are available, can you please roll call vote?
Thank you. The motion is carried at this time. We will now move into new business for tonight. We do have a few items on agenda for new business, first being COVID-19 Small Business Assistant Grant for review and approval by the board tonight. I believe Acting County Administrator, Ms. Rollins, has information to bring to us on that. Do you still have muted, Ms. Rollins?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the public. Actually, Mr. David Harrison, the county's Economic Development Director, is going to bring forth this agenda item to you all this evening. Mr. Harrison?
Good evening, Chairman Elliott, board members, Mrs. Rollins, and everyone virtually assembled under the new business agenda item, COVID-19 Small Business Grant Fund. The Economic Development Office requesting authorization from the Board of Supervisors to appropriate $20,000 from the Economic Development Fund for the establishment of COVID-19 small business grants. The purpose of this COVID-19 grants would be to provide relief funds to the Surrey local business community based on criteria that demonstrates their businesses having been adversely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. The terms and criteria of the grant awards will be established by the Board of Supervisors and captured in the form of an agreement between the Board of Supervisors and Economic Development Authority that establishes the award criteria. If approved, the Board of Supervisors will dispatch funds to the EDA and a committee comprised of members of the Board of Supervisors and EDA and staff. Will be appointed to the application on the year. Then provided copies of the proposed award criteria and proposed COVID-19 grant application. If you need more time to review these documents, we can defer action to the next scheduled virtual board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for that information. Ms. Rollins, you had something?
Yes, I want to say that one of the reasons why the Economic Development Office and administration wanted to bring this information to you tonight is because, as you are aware, we receive numerous of correspondences since the COVID-19 pandemic as relates to small business assistance, and we try to share as much as we can with the community. We had engaged initially the Surrey Chamber of Commerce in hopes that they will certainly be also a partner in sharing information to the business community, staff to include Mr. Harrison, and I believe Ms. Bernhausen as well, you know, has been sharing all information as we get it, you know, based on the COVID-19 relief for businesses. We do know that at the federal level, that stimulus packages and those are things of that nature do not reach small communities. So this was an opportunity again that we felt there would be a good effort to show the business community and the Board of Supervisor support as business retention and expansion is one of the strategic initiatives of the Board of Supervisors. So just want to add that we've been getting the information, we've still been sharing it. SBA certainly has been a good resource that we have been sharing with the local businesses. Mr. Harrison, webinars and things of that nature that we fail, the Pay Loan Protection Programs and things of that nature, when we do get those, we have been sharing them. But again, this is just one of those another strategic creative initiatives that we were bringing forth to you all tonight for your consideration. Similar to what .
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for the presentation, and Ms. Rollins. So we're looking for action for the board to approve the $20,000 from the EDA funding. Logistics and all will be worked out. Mr. Harrison indicated that it will be coordinated between the Board of Supervisors and the EDA. Are there any questions from the board members of Mr. Harrison or Ms. Rollins on this new business item?
Chairman Elliott, this is Mike Drury.
Yes, Mr. Drury.
Just a question from Ms. Rollins or Mr. Harrison. When you say EDA funds, that's EDA funds, county EDA fund? Economic Development Funds?
It's actually EDO funds, so the funds is coming from the EDO, the Economic Development Fund in the EDO line item, if I'm correct. Well, I believe that's what, yeah.
I assume so, thank you. That's it.
Are there any other questions from board members? If not, I think it's a very good incentive to our local businesses. So at this time, I would entertain a motion from the board to approve the $20,000 to go towards the small business grant.
Chairman Elliott, Mike Drury, I'll make the motion.
The motion, you have a second?
Chairman Judy Little.
Ms. Little, continue.
Will second the motion.
It's been properly moved and second. There are no other questions, could we have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And Mr. Holmes, if he is available. Does it sound like it?
Doesn't sound like it. Motion has, motion is carried. Mr. Harrison, are there any other updates on the guides of conquering a business crisis and Riverside seafood? You can compile those two at this time.
Chairman Elliott, I don't have any other updates. If the board has any other additional questions for me, I'll be willing to answer them. The information provided to you all is review in terms of material and data as it pertains to COVID-19 relief and receiving awards. I'm not sure if.
Getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah.
Could everyone please .
Can we ask that everybody? Yes, if you're not presenting, please mute your device at this time. Okay? We will move now to a presentation, Economic Development Review Sharing Agreement Proposal presented by Urban Grid. Presentation for our review on tonight.
Chairman Elliott, I would like to kind of give a synopsis of what they're presenting tonight. Urban Grid will be coming to us presenting solar discussion as it pertains to the economic impact of Surrey County's proposed Spring Grove Solar III project. The Spring Grove Solar III project is still pending planning commission consideration for the tentative date of May 18th, 2020. Legislation concerning solar revenue sharing has been approved by both the House and the Senate and has been signed by the governor and will be effective July 1st, 2020. And tonight, we have no action needed on this agenda item. I have several conversations with Mr. James Crawford and Mr. Roger Bowers from Urban Grid about how the newly approved solar revenue sharing legislation could benefit Surrey County. And at this time, I would like to give way to Mr. Bowers or Mr. Crawford to present at this time. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, Chair Elliott and members of the board and attendees to the meeting. Roger Bowers, on behalf of Spring Grove Solar III. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight about solar economic development. As Mr. Harrison said, in February, we submitted applications for a rezoning and conditional use permit on 600 acres south of Route 10, and the Planning Commission is scheduled to hear those on May 18th. Tonight, we are coming to you to provide a different matter, to provide you an overview of the recent changes in state law that directly and positively impact solar economic development. And our goal is to provide a tangible example of how the new revenue share law has the potential to bring additional revenue to Surrey County, especially at a time now when shortfalls are expected. The 2020 Virginia General Assembly passed several laws directly affecting solar economic development, and they've now been signed. We've spoken with Mr. Harrison and county attorney and Mr. Saunders about these. Looking for new ways to, so let's bring economic benefit to Surrey. Specifically, two laws are most pertinent. One is the revenue share law that allows localities adoption of a, if they adopt a revenue share ordinance, they can assess a $1,400 per megawatt per year assessment on solar equipment in lieu of the M&amp;T taxation. This additional revenue has no restrictions on how it can be used. It specifically expressly states that it has no impact on state funding formulas. There's no partial exemption, no valuation by the SEC or depreciation for, that would otherwise be there in machinery and tools tax. The other is a host or siting agreement, which allows locality and solar developers to negotiate the terms of conditions for approval of solar projects. The agreement can be used to fund capital projects that are in the locality's capital improvement plan or in the budget as capital items, and they supersede provisions of the zoning ordinance. Agreements are allowed in census tract that are eligible as federal opportunity zones, and its funding is limited to capital projects. Given more time, we're willing to discuss further any questions that you may have or discuss these new laws and other laws pertaining to solar development generally. But now, we'd like to, an opportunity to discuss how these changes can positively impact Surrey. When the board was considering the budget in April, we heard that public service corporation revenue for the county was declining. The new revenue share law can bring additional economic opportunity to Surrey to backstop this decline. It has a simple payment of increased revenue on equipment capacity year in, year out, without having any restrictions on those funds due to depreciation. Using this new law, if the county adopts a revenue sharing ordinance, Spring Grove Solar III has committed to voluntarily opt-in and pay this annual fixed payment of $1,400 per megawatt AC for each megawatt of capacity approved for its project. The annual payment would replace the depreciating M&amp;T tax, and the funds would not be restricted to capital projects, and the increased revenue would not affect state education funding. For the Spring Grove Solar III's proposed 60-megawatt project, this would provide Surrey an additional $84,000 of unrestricted revenue each year. Previous estimates that we put together based upon the M&amp;T tax was that the project would provide about $1.1 million over the life of the project in additional M&amp;T tax revenue. If we partner in the revenue sharing program over that same period, this 60-megawatt project will provide $2.9 million in revenue, representing an increase of $1.8 million over the life of the project. We looked at a 35-year lifespan because that is what the projects that are currently out there, they're under a 35-year lease. Not only would this revenue stream avoid fluctuating changes in public service equipment valuation or depreciation, its revenue would be in addition to the increased land revenue of solar use and the related boosts in construction and operations expenditures in the county. These recent laws were specifically put in place for solar development to bring additional economic opportunity to counties, and our project can bring a significant positive impact to Surrey. Today, we present this proposal. We ask the board's blessing to continue discussions with Mr. Harrison and the county attorney to hammer out the details, and any specific recommendation would be brought back to the board for your consideration up to the time, your timing, but probably after we were heard for our land use case. These are trying times for all of us to capture a positive opportunities as they become available. We know that solar development will bring increased revenue to Surrey County with little impact on county services, and with revenue sharing, we can increase that positive impact without any restrictions, unlike the siting legislation, which would allocate funds to just capital improvements. Spring Grove Solar III wants to bring these economic development opportunities to Surrey as a landowner and a good neighbor. We thank Mr. Harrison for his efforts in speaking with us, and we appreciate your time tonight, and are happy to answer any questions you might.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers, for the presentation. I do have one question. You may have already answered it, but I'm not quite sure. You said it's $14,000 per megawatt. How many megawatts are in this project that you are proposing?
It's not been detailed designed yet, and we won't be able to do the detailed design until we have land use approvals, but we're estimating 60 megawatts on the property that is before, that we're currently bringing, Spring Grove Solar III owns.
Okay. Are there any other questions from board members?
Mr. Bowers, is that just 60 megs on the additional 600 acres or is on the whole project, which is it?
I'm sorry.
Did you understand my question?
I did, I did. It is on the 60 megawatts, the new project that we brought forward in February. We actually brought forth the initial application this back last fall. This is not pertaining to the acreage north of Route 10, which was permitted back in 2018.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Bowers, would this have any impact? Would have any impact at all on the project that's already in place?
No, that's, we can't change what we've already got there and the development plans we have there, or the leases that we have in place with Dominion. But this is, we feel that, we looked at the economic impact that we could have by opting in on the revenue share for the application for this additional land, and we're very excited to have the opportunity to bring that amount of additional money forward as part of our project.
I'm sorry, any other board members?
Can you hear me? Reverend Elliott?
Yes, Mr. Calhoun, go ahead, right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bowers, I just, you mentioned two laws. One of them was the revenue share law, and the second one was host and something. I wasn't writing fast enough. What was that second law again, please?
Host and siting agreement. It allows the localities in qualifying zones, and we understand that Surrey has those qualifying zones, to negotiate a separate host or siting agreement. There are some restrictions on that. That agreement needs to be worked out between the county and the applicant. We have identified an amount of funds that are available as additional economic incentive, and it could be done through a host or siting agreement, or it could be done through the revenue share. We propose the revenue share because those are unrestricted funds, are not limited to capital projects. And some of the other unknowns in negotiating agreement, whereas the revenue shares are real, is pretty straightforward, it's just an increase in taxation.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Drury?
Microphone off. This Reverend Elliott, this is Mike Drury. Mr. Bowers, the, I'm hearing correct that, and I understand what you were saying, but this revenue sharing, the $1,400 per megawatt, is only if we, on the additional 600 acres, correct?
Yes, sir.
Does, and I have not detailed the Virginia code. I think it's rather vague. Is that $1,400 per megawatt? I know it takes place of M&amp;T. Is that y'all's decision or the county's decision?
The county would need to adopt a revenue share ordinance. The $1,400 is established by code. That was negotiated at length between the VACO and the solar industry during the General Assembly, and they came up with that dollar amount. It is, it provides for a taxation on the solar equipment part that's about double of what the M&amp;T taxation provided.
Is it allowed on previous project?
No, it is only looking forward from projects that are, it has a specific carve-out that it is not applicable back against previously approved projects.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Rollins.
Yes, I also want to add again that the information that's being presented tonight by Mr. Bowers, and I'm sure he's aware, and so is Mr. Harrison, is the information is for informational purposes tonight in terms of letting you all know, you know, the economic impact analysis of the legislation. Obviously, you know, the county would, you know, get additional information if needed from our county attorneys, but again, this was just one way to provide you all this analysis as we begin to, you know, deliberate going forward as to what the county would like to do in terms of the M&amp;T or take advantage of, you know, the opportunity to bring in additional revenue for economic development. So again, it's informational . informational purposes, and as Mr. Harrison stated, really no action needed tonight. But again, we just thought it was important, and the timing just happened to be right to be able to bring this to your attention to this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Thank you, Mr. Bow, and thank you for, Mr. Crawford, for being there as well. Thank you for the information on the night and for give more chance to deliberate. Thank you so very much. At this time, we will move forward with our agenda. It is our department updates. The documents have been included for our information. This is item number one, and item number two is the commissioner revenues update. Mr. Chuckins, is he with us tonight? Mr. Jonathan Chuckins, is he with us?
Mr. Elliott, this is Ms. Chapman. I don't believe so. He just provided it as informational.
Okay. All right, we have our documents. All this for informational purposes. Next on the agenda is our what citizens comments. Citizen comments, they have been emailed to the board, and they have been received. We have hopefully been able to provide the correspondent back to those who have sent emails to let you know that they have been received. They are forwarded to the board members. I know that at this time we would like to be able to have voice in the matters, but believe me, you are having voice because the board, they are receiving your comments, and we are taking them to heart. There will be instructions given on our next meeting for public hearing or items that require public hearing, and you will be able to weigh in during our next meeting on our public hearing during our budget discussion. So where public hearing is required, you have instructions for that on our agenda tonight. So if you were to click on the link for our public hearing, then you will find instructions that will be available for you to express yourself at our next board meeting dealing with the budget. At this time, is for our board comments, and I first want to once again, thank our staff for job well done. Also, Ms. Rollins, she has she she's very modest in this. She has received certification and county administration. I forget the, I'm gonna let her give the exact title of what she has been certified in, but it's in the job that she has performed, and we give her kudos for taking the initiative to go get this certification. Ms. Rollins, could you let everyone know in modesty? I know you're so modest, what you have been recently been certified in?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Elliott, for your comments. Yes, as as I had advised the board back in January, that I had enrolled in the I C M A credential manager program. So this is with the International County Administrators Association. So I learned on this Wednesday that I had received my credentialing. So now I am a certified credential manager underneath I C M A. And I I think I'm one of seventy three in the state of Virginia. And as you all know, previously, Mr. Sandy Warner, who also has a designation, and and I guess I can say that you always have role models. That I can probably give him some credit as that was one of the things that he said, Ms. Rollins, you should get your credential managing, and and I did that when he was here as interim, I enrolled. And this is where I am. So thank you so much. It's good to have. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Rollins. And I just want want again, want to thank staff for the hard work that you are displaying and that you are doing. I know this is is different, and being different has been difficult, but we are moving the county forward thanks to what you are doing. And I just want to let the board know that I had an opportunity this morning to be on a conference call with Congressman Congressman McKeechen, and he gave some very insightful information that will be hopefully beneficial to the county in the future. So we are definitely attending to the business of the county even in the pandemic. Are there any other comments from the board at this time? We will call a roll call. Mr. Drury, are there any comments from you at this time?
Good, good evening and thanks. Just again, I want to follow up and and give thanks to a county administrator, Ms. Rollins, and and also David Harrison, just for that of this evening and and during this difficult times and of course to all staff. So again, many thanks to to the continuity of government that we are we are seeing, and and thank you so much. The second thing is, it's just a just a minor note, and I almost hate to open my mouth on this one because the last time I was chair back in December, I got pretty pretty much negativity comments on Facebook over over guns, and I'm gonna bring something up this evening. I just to other board members, I don't know whether you've got any calls. I guess people are not at work, people at home. I'm starting to get a few calls from citizens about persistent target practicing by their neighbors and and from farmers as well that have livestock. So so I just ask people that like to do that on their property to use some some reasoning with it and and don't go all day long with it and so forth. Again, just just use some reasoning so we won't have those conflicts. There are people, yes, that like to shoot their guns on their properties, but there's also people living in Surrey that like the quietness of it. And, you know, we have noise ordinances that we could probably do something about this, but I hope we won't have to. And again, anyone that's listening that's got friends that do that, just tell them to use some reasoning and be respectful of their neighbors. And thank you, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Mrs. Little?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to thank the staff and you for doing a great job. And also to say that the report from the with the solar this evening is welcome. I think that solar is the future. And Surrey is in on the future development, and I'm proud of that. And those funds will certainly help our community and us in our budgeting. So I think about Mr. Bowers and their group for being in Surrey County.
Thank you, Ms. Low. Mr. Holmes, have you joined us? Are you available for comments?
I I I hope that I am, but I'm probably not.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, sir. Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Holmes.
Yes, welcome.
But yeah, I I am in agreement with what is going, what has happened, and I'm in support of it. So I generally affirm what is going on and support it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Elliott. I'd just like to say also to the staff, thank you very much for your hard work in this in this time of the pandemic and not being able to get into your office and have your normal supplies and printers. I'm in kind of your same boat from home. I don't have my printer, and it makes it for makes it difficult to get some things done. But thank you very much, and congratulations, Mrs. Rollins, on your on your certificate. And I really appreciate the board as I'm growing into this position and seeing some good positive changes coming into the county. And I'm very thankful and and knowing that it will continue as the months and and time goes by. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. At this time, we will now turn it over to county administrator for the county administrator's report, Mrs. Rollins.
Yes, we thank you all to the board members for for those comments, and I can say likewise, it has been such a pleasure working with Mr. Elliott and Mr. Drury as vice chair and the rest of the board members during the last five months, and certainly appreciate your support and comments. And I need to you as far as thanking the staff for their hard work and their efforts. I do think again that you have a great team of folks who are working through this continuity of operations, and kudos to the Surrey team for all that you've doing and have done and will continue to do. One of the things as far as my report this evening, not a whole lot, as you're all aware, conversations have been at the state level with our governor in terms of phasing in approach of some things back after COVID nineteen. We have been, of course, taken that direction in terms of the stay at home order that's in in play until June tenth. But I do want to advise the board and the public that staff have begun these conversations as to how we going to phase in employees back to work. Right now, all the teleworking is going on, but we do understand that at some point, we're gonna have to get back to business. Where we we are doing the business, but get back to the facilities to do the business. But right now, we're having those discussions as to how we going to, you know, phase in employees coming back to work. So we are having those conversations, and whatever we do is going to be safety first. And of course, we are also having conversations too as to what point we time to have our public back to our facility. How do we go about handling that from a safety standpoint? So we are having those conversations with the emergency services and others. Just a couple of different public service announcements. The information that was in your board packet from the commissioner revenue was again, a Department of Taxation update, but he just wanted to advise all the citizens of the extension of the state taxes. So due to the pandemic, that deadline has been extended to June first twenty twenty, and that deadline has been traditionally, I want to say May first or May fifteenth, but again, that information is in your packet to show our citizens and you all there was an extension pandemic on that. Also, I'd want to add that we continue as a county to step up to the plate and provide services during pandemic. This pandemic as far as helping our community, Ms. Pierce's with social services, and I believe some of you on the call may have benefited from the meals that were given away on yesterday, I believe, if I'm correct. Hot meals. I won't go into the details as to what they were, but that is collaboration of the Department of Social Services and some other Virginia diner and some other things that they're doing to make sure that we are providing those services to our seniors and others during this time. So just want to add that one of the articles that was posted also on your agenda, and I believe, Mr. Harrison, this is what Mr. Elliott was referring to. And I just wanted to share that, especially because we're asking, we have asked you all to approve the resolution appreciation. But as you there, the article that was prepared by the Longwood Small Business Development Center, and it shows Mr. Everett Howell a River Time seafood. And yes, and I just wanted to share that that is one of the agencies that that the county provided a small level of support to because she the director of that agency or that agency worked with Mr. Everett Howell in terms of getting his business open. So we just want to highlight that particular business, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Harrison, and others as one of many that we recognize doing business appreciation month, okay? This afternoon, I was on a long call with the Riverside Regional Jail Authority, but one of the things I want to bring out as far as that meeting is during COVID nineteen, they took the opportunity to revisit the budget that had been presented to us, just like other agencies whereby we have to make adjustments. Good news in terms of, if you consider to be good news, is we're able to go back and and make some adjustments that give us a little bit more flexibility in our budget in terms of some savings from them having to go back in their budget and make some adjustments due to COVID nineteen, not having as many inmates, for an example, and having to go into use of unbalanced, went into adjusted the raise that they were going to provide to employees. So in all that resulted in a few dollar savings to the county. So we'll bring forth that amount next week when we have the public hearing on the proposed budget. And I believe that's all I have for this evening. You're muted, sir.
Once again, thank you, Ms. Rollins, for your report and doing such a bang up job during these difficult times. Mr. Phelps, are you here to give us a report from EMS before adjournment?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening, Chairman, board members, Ms. Rollins, and citizens of Surrey County. I'd like to welcome everyone to hurricane preparedness week. So please take the time and 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 create a home preparedness kit. You know, I know we got the pandemic and everything going on, but other other events could occur, so I want to make sure everybody's prepared for hurricane season. We'll be posting some messages as early as tomorrow on the county website with guidance to help prepare the citizens for hurricane season. There's something I wanted to bring to light, some concerns I have with the well being of Surrey County citizens as it pertains to the COVID nineteen. I've been using the phrase that the county has been fortunate in the low rate of spread of the coronavirus, but I'd like to change that term to lucky. I I feel I've I've been out and about with my commute back and forth to work because I do go into work quite often. And I see citizens throughout the county and passersby throughout the county not wearing masks, not social distancing or anything to that extent, and not taking any of the recommendations that the CDC or the the Virginia Health Department, the governor, or or Surrey County in that fact has has put forth. So that's why I've worked. We've been fairly lucky. All the communities around us are are, you know, their their numbers are increasing from one to five to one to seven a day. And these are these are counties that actually border Surrey County. So so we have been very lucky. Surrey County is an aging community, and and with that, we all need to take that into consideration. You know, the catchphrase that we the county came up with at the beginning of the year for twenty twenty was unity in the community. And we all need to unite and do our part to take the necessary precautions to prevent the spread of the virus to our family, friends, neighbors, and strangers. We all have to do our part. I know the governor is talking about releasing some restrictions that has mainly to do with business. So on, Rollins, full on, stay at home waters as best as possible till tenth. Emergency management has been averaging about eight to ten conferences a week with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, Virginia Department of Health, Crater Health District, FEMA, and other localities to ensure that we're preparing our citizens as best as possible. We are in the process of developing a reentry plan to work as Ms. Rollins has stated for the staff. And we're also continuing our quest for P P E. We experienced a major delay this over the past couple of weeks with a I'm sure I'm sure a lot of people seen it in the news, but the Hampton FedEx has experienced a lot of problems over there. We had some P P E sitting over there since April seventeenth, and a good portion of it was actually sent back to the sender on Friday. So it makes it a little difficult to get our P P E for our staff to think along lines. But we're still working hard on that. Also, if anybody has any questions, any citizens have any questions, they can continue to email me at covidnineteen@surreycountyva.gov, and I can get that information, you know, answer some of their questions. I would also like to take this time to recognize our volunteer firefighters and volunteer rescue squad members for their hard work and dedication, and I appreciate your approval for the recognition of their importance with the resolution for the National EMS Week. I'd also like to extend that a little bit further and thank all those professional providers. Providers that live in the county. But other than that, that's all I have at this time, and
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Phelps, for the update. I think you got some feedback at the end of your presentation, but the majority of it was definitely heard and appreciated. So thank you for your presentation. And let us let us as a county get the information out that we still want to use and take all precautions. As Mr. Phelps said, that there may be some restrictions lifted on next Friday, but the virus is still here. So let us do due diligence and take the necessary precaution because this virus does not discriminate. Take care of yourself out here. Be as safe as at all possible. The next item on the agenda is the instructions for attending for our public hearing on next week. So if you want to make have public hearings on the the budget, please follow those instructions so that you can have the opportunity that you so desire. If there are no other items for If there are no other items for the board to discuss on tonight, we will entertain a motion for adjournment until May the fourteenth.
This is Mike.
One, one, one question, Mr. Drury. Will that meeting be at six or seven on the fourteenth?
Whatever you all desire. I'm okay with six, but it's it's whatever you all desire as a board. It is a special meeting. It's not your regular schedule. If this suits the board, we could have it an hour earlier.
We will entertain a motion for May the fourteenth at six o'clock.
Chairman, Chairman Elliott, this is Mike Drury. I, when we've had meetings at six o'clock, I know that some citizens didn't realize that and didn't come in into the meeting till seven. I'm a bit concerned about that, but I'll do whatever the other board members want. But I did have some concern about that when we earlier had work sessions at six.
Do we, could we have a motion from any of the board members on whatever time you like, six or seven, then we see if we can get a second. We look at, let's look at doing seven o'clock.
Yes.
Be consistent.
Be consistent.
Mike, I'll make it for seven.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman. Judy?
It's been properly moved and seconded that we will adjourn until May the fourteenth at seven o'clock. There are no other questions. A roll call vote from Ms. Chapman.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Holmes has left us.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
All right, we got Mr. Holmes voted yes.
Okay, good.
Mr. Calhoun, can you roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are now officially adjourned until May the fourteenth at seven o'clock. God bless you all, and please, please, please be safe.
Thank you. Stay safe.